I'll order the 5:15 PM time certain public hearing to adopt the 2024-2025 final millage rate and budget. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We'll now do a roll call.
Chairman Masaro.
Sally Hunt.
Kristi Chong.
Will Furry. Okay, so we will move on to 2.01 summary, final millage and budget presentation by Ms. Womack.
Good afternoon, Chairman Furry, Board members and Superintendent Moore.
Welcome.
I'm here to present the summary, final millage and budget presentation at 2.01. I will briefly go over this presentation. This is the third time this has been presented in the last two and a half months, the most recent being at the tentative millage and budget hearing at July 30th, which is online for the public to view at any time. Starting with the general funds. As you can see, our total revenues are $155 million of this under state sources. As mentioned, at the July 30 tentative meeting, we have split out the scholarships from our FEFP under the state sources to make that very transparent. Our scholarships are 2425 or 10.8 million. In total expenditures for the second half, we've not done the same. As you know, the scholarship revenue we get in, we do have to budget for that in expenditures because we will lose that money. So that is shown as the second line item in the bottom section of total expenses. On the next page is a summary of the family empowerment scholarship for the past five years. You can take note of the number of students and how they have increased from 2021 to the current fiscal year. 2021 is the first year that this scholarship was put into place by legislation in early 2020. And you can see the scholarship funds have started at 880,000 back then, and we are now at 10.8 million as they continue to grow every year. Next slide is a pie chart of our general fund expenditures. As you know, salary and benefits is at least 80%. The next highest percentage is purchase services at 11%. Much of this includes our water, sewer, and contracted services such as speech-language pathologists and nurses that we cannot fill during the normal school year. Next slide is our special revenue funds. These are all of our federal grants. First column is food service. The second column is our federal grants. This column is all of our regular grants we get, the bulk of it being Title I and IDEA. And the third column is our federal stabilization, which is our SRCARS and RAP grants, which are due to expire September 30th, 2024. Next slide is our debt service fund. The first column is our revenue bond fund that is funded through the state. The second column is our COPS, which as you know, we have one COPS out, a 2014 series, which is the one I had just mentioned in the previous board meeting that we have refunded two years ago. Five of the years of maturity that are left have been refinanced or refunded, is the governmental term. Very net present value savings of $699,000. And our newest debt is our bus lease purchase that we did about a year ago. This is financed over five years and is paid in semi-annual payments each year. Capital projects fund on the next page, first column is PICO. All of these funds go to the charter schools. The district does not retain any of these funds. Second column is DOE and DS. This is a pot of money we get, around a half million dollars each year that is help, that goes to help renovate and maintain our school facilities. Third column is the 1.5 mil. This is wholly generated by our local property taxes. As you can see, we are looking to end at a fund balance next year of 19.9, which is very similar to where we are ending this year. We have worked very hard and have been very strategic in our five-year capital plan to ensure that we maintain a healthy reserve for expenses such as hurricane, natural disasters that we're not planning for, and also to be able to transfer in funds per Florida statute to assist our general fund. And the last column is other capital projects, which is our impact fees and our sales tax. And the total revenues there represent about a 50/50% cost for each of those funds, or 50/50% revenue for each of those funds. The next page is our uses of the 1.5 mil. This is directly off of our five-year capital plan. The whole top portion there is all of our projects for our school facilities. And then at the second half, our items such as FFNE for our schools and departments, school buses, vehicles, and all of our transfers that we are able to transfer into our general fund. The next page is a scholarship fund. The only expense out of here is a $500 scholarship once a year to a student that qualifies. And the last fund is our self-insurance fund. This is our health insurance fund as we are self-insured. The next page is a summary of district enrollment. As you can see, we do continue to increase our enrollment. Keep in mind, based on my footnotes there, this does include family empowerment scholarships that is now included in our FTE forecasting in January, and that number is given to us by DOE. And the last page is our millage rates. As we continue to have this conversation every year, our millage is again the very lowest in over 20 years. Our RLE for 2425 is 3.117. Our operating discretionary is .758, and our capital outlay is 1.5 for a combined millage of 5.365. I will note again for the benefit of the public, we are the only taxing municipality in the county that is unable to set our own millage. It is set by DOE. I would take any questions on this presentation at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Womack? Okay, well then we will move forward with the agenda. Moving on to 3.01, at this time I will recess to the public hearing. Before we begin the public hearing, I will need a motion to adopt the agenda on the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Masaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. And we will now move on to item 13.02. At this time, I will read resolution 24/2505 on the 2024-25 final millage rate. Florida Department of Education, resolution 24/25-05 determining revenues and millage levied. Resolution of the District School Board of Flagler County, Florida, determining the amount of revenue to be produced and to, and the millage to be levied for the general fund for the district local capital improvement fund and for district debt service fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2025. Whereas Section 1011.04 Florida statute FS requires that upon receipt of the certificate of the property appraiser, giving the assessed valuation of the county and of each of the special tax school districts, the school board shall determine by resolution an amount necessary to be raised for current operating purpose, purposes and for debt services, funds, and the millage to be levied for each such fund, including the voted millage. And whereas 1011.71 Florida statute provides for the amount necessary to be raised for local capital improvement outlay and the millage to be levied. And whereas the certificate of the property appraiser has been received, therefore be it resolved by the district school board that the amounts necessary to be raised as shown by the officially adopted budget and the millages necessary to be levied for each school fund of the district for the fiscal year are as follows. District school tax, non-voted levy, certified taxable value is $18,458,453,708. Amount to be raised is 55,532,833. Millage levy, 3.1170 mils. Total required millage is 55,532,833, 3.1170 mils. District school tax discretionary millage, non-voted levy, certified value, $18,458,453,708. Amount to be raised is $13,326,455.7480 mils. District, so we'll move on, there is nothing in that bracket. Next page, we have district local capital improvement tax, non-voted levy, certified taxable value, $18,558,450.
Eighteen billion.
Amount to be raised, $26,724,174. 1.5 mils is the levy. Total millage rate to be levied exceeds computed.
Exceeds the rollback rate.
Exceeds the rollback rate. State of Florida County of Flagler, LaShaka Moore Superintendent of Schools and ex officio secretary of the District School Board of Flagler County, Florida, do hereby certify that the above is true and complete copy of a resolution passed and adopted by the District School Board, Flagler County, Florida on September 3rd, 2024, signed by District School Superintendent Copies of this resolution shall be submitted to the Florida Department of Education, Florida Department of Education, School Business Services, Office of Funding and Financial Reporting, 325 West Gaines Street, Room 814, Tallahassee, Florida, 323990400, county tax collector and county property appraiser. So that completes the reading of Agenda Item 3.02. This time I will read the resolution, 3.03 of 24/25-6 on the 24 and 25 final millage rate. Resolution number 24/25-06, a resolution of the Flagler County School Board adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024/2025, whereas the School Board of Flagler County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapter 200 and 1011 Florida statute, approve tentative millage rates and tentative budget for the fiscal year July 2024 to June 30th, 2025. And whereas the Flagler County School Board set forth the appropriations and revenue estimated for the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. And whereas at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statute, the Flagler County School Board adopted the tentative millage rate and the budget in the amount of $323,856,170 for fiscal year '24 and '25. Now therefore be it resolved that the attached budget of Flagler County School Board, including the millage rate as set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Flagler County and as a tentative budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. So at this time, we will move to item 4.01. Now that the resolution has been read, it is now open for public comment. Do we have anybody registered for public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move on to 5.01. At this time, I will close the public hearing to move on to Agenda Item 6.01 to reconvene So 7.01, at this time, we will take action requesting board approval of resolution 24/25-05 to adopt the 2024-25 tentative millage rate that was read at Agenda Item 3.02. I will need a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Masaro.
Second.
A second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. So we will now move on to 7.02. At this time, I will take, we will take action requesting board approval of resolution 24/25-06 to adopt the 24-25 tentative budget.
Final budget.
The final?
She said final budget.
Okay, so, final budget that was read at the Agenda Item 13.02. I will need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second from Ms. Hunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. We will now adjourn this meeting. Thank you. All right, that was a mouthful.
It is.
Okay, we're going to resume our September 3rd, 2024, 3 PM workshop, and we are going to start at Agenda Item 9.02. Welcome, Mr. Reynolds.
Hello, good evening, Board, Chairman Furry, Superintendent Moore. Before you is the 24-25 Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar. Per statute, we just have to get this approved at the board level, and then we post it to our website and submit it to DOE. This is really just a template that the DOE provides that we fill in a couple things. A lot of it's pre-filled in by them from all the testing that is provided through the state and through national testing, and so I'm just here to answer any questions that you have for it.
No questions for myself. Anybody else have anything to add? No? Okay, well, thank you for providing that information, Mr. Reynolds, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
And the easy one today, right? Okay, so we will move on to 9.03 for club travel. That's Mr. Willahan.
I will start with 9.03 for our four secondary schools, for Flagler Palm Coast High School, Matanzas High School, Indian Charles Middle School, and Buddy Taylor Middle School Club Travel. Board, as you may know, that various, our clubs do participate in various district, regional, and state competitions. Since this board does hold one monthly meeting, some of these, these trips require them to stay overnight. So if they are invited or participate in a trip where we cannot bring that trip to the board, we are seeking your approval for a blanket presentation or trip request for our clubs, for our four secondary schools. This is something that has been done yearly, and it allows our clubs and activities to participate, participate in these events in the event we cannot get to you for approval.
Is this like when, like we had a, that trip to Tallahassee last year?
No, 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 no. This would be more like Future Problem Solvers or something like that, where their, where their club is invited to make it to a state level where maybe they were a last-minute add-on or something like that.
Good question, though. That doesn't happen.
No, it's not, it's not the same.
Okay.
So, yeah, bands, starlet steel drums, percussion ensemble, chorus, that's being, usually those are the ones that you see in there. So, so that would be for our club travel. And once again, for our FHSA, and if you don't mind.
Yeah, want to move right into that? That's fine.
So 9.04, our FHSA sports team travel. So once again, our athletic teams that participate and make it past districts and regionals. Most of these are maybe held in Tallahassee or Miami, and they require, in their multi-day events, so it does require them to stay overnight. So our athletic teams will come before and have the opportunity to stay overnight to participate at the state and regional level. So once again, seeking your approval for those teams to travel and attend to district, regional, and state events if they make it to that point.
Who would be the approver, you know, so I appreciate, Superintendent Moore, all of these would go before her for approval?
Yes, so, yes.
Cool. And to your point, would fall under district policy?
And our procedures, yes. Yeah, and I know for the FHSA, when they do make it to the state level, there is a list of recommended hotels that they vet. Sometimes those, those get deleted once, you know, more and more teams go, and maybe it's a new venue. I think this year, we're not part of the royal team for football, but they're going to the villages for the first time this year, so there might be a new hotel that's on the recommendation list. So, but as hotels are maybe aren't in the safest part of towns, but the FHSA does give the athletic directors and the coaches a recommended list of areas to stay.
Any other questions for Ms. Lai? Okay, well then now, we'll move on. Thank you, Tom. 9.05, overnight travel consent, field trips. Mr. Reese.
Yes, good evening, Board, Superintendent Moore. I have a number of items for you today. I have five student trips that are coming up. Four for FPC, two are soccer trip, one FPC cross-country running in the Manhattan Invitational. We have SGA, as has a regional conference in Orlando. And lastly, we have, Matanzas High School has their UCA All-American Cheer event in Orlando. Those are all coming up in the next few months.
And no cost to the district?
No, ma'am.
They're all covered at them?
That is correct.
Okay, there are no other comments, we'll move on to 9.06, Mr. Reese, for out-of-state travel.
Yes, we have a number of events taking place for out-of-state. We have two folks attending the National Council for Teachers of Mathematics. We already approved last month, Mr. Reynolds attending that event. These are two of our teachers, one from Buddy Taylor and one from FPC that'll be attending that, that event with him. And then we have a trip travel for the athletic director for Flagler Palm Coast High School. And we have one for Adam Blair from my office for Best Practice Innovations and CTE Conference, which is taking place in October in Portland, Oregon.
And these are all budgeted for?
That is correct.
Remember Adam did, came and did present on something, is that the same thing?
Yeah, he does annually this trip.
Yeah.
Arizona, so yes.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Reese. Okay, so we are going to move forward to human resources. 11.01 Superintendent Evaluation, Mr. O'Leary.
Chairman Furry, Board members, Superintendent Moore. We have all the evaluations that were submitted by board members. We have the data components for student achievement that are all part of what comprise the annual evaluation. You submitted your evaluation piece, and Ms. Moore submitted her self-evaluation, and it's been compiled, and it sits here for your discussion, approval, or...
It looks like a lot of papers.
Yeah, my, just in case, because I know it's been a while since some of you did evaluations, and if you wanted to refresh your memory, I did make some paper copies for you.
Are these, this is all scanned into this?
It's all scanned in.
Board doc?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with that version.
That's fine. I'm just covering my bases.
Sure, thanks for reading the paper.
Do you have them printed? I will take.
Can I have a paper copy?
Yeah, I'll take one, too.
I mean, you went through the trouble.
We have to meet now with LaShaka, so this will be helpful.
Thank you, Bob. No, 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 thank you.
Since it's printed, I'll take mine as well.
Okay.
We're not going to waste a paper.
Ms. Moore, I'm one short.
Okay, yes, you may.
No, she can have it.
No, no, it's fine.
Thank you.
Can you pass this to Ms. Chong?
That'll give us time to look at it.
So Ms. Johnson will reach out to you if there, if you would like to take a moment to sit and share individually with me, she will, she will reach out to you.
I think we have to.
Yes.
It's not a choice. Each, each member is now required to meet with you to review the, the information and have your personal comments.
So just have a...
We will make sure that it gets scheduled.
Get this on the, on the calendar.
And just to kind of share just how it's organized, the front portion is what Ms. Moore submitted herself. The second one is a, the average compilation of all your evaluation scores, and then each individual one is stacked, ready to...
Thank you for doing this.
Thanks for putting it all together.
Yeah, it's not easy.
And we will meet individually with Superintendent Moore.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. And so now, we, we still need you for 11.02, out-of-state travel.
11.02, yes, I am requesting to go to the National Conference for HR Directors of School Boards and Public Sector Employees.
And again, it's budgeted for, so it's in your budget, right?
It is, it is in the budget.
Is it anywhere fun?
It is in Seattle.
Come.
Well, I'll be usual.
That's nice.
All right, so if there are any questions or comments there, then we'll move on to 11.03 Personnel Items.
11.03 is, once again, the workshop edition of what is our personnel consent items that will continue to grow as we progress towards the next board meeting.
I, I was somewhat concerned to see so many changes have been out. Is there anything going on? We have five, that's a lot for one.
Well, there was also a cross-current, there were, there were some allocations, some additional units added, and so that was, that was reflected into the staffing committee based on the 10-day count, did add some units. Yeah, a couple units, and also VPK, we've been hiring for the VPK positions as well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's the request for leave, though there are five teachers, so...
That's interesting.
That's a lot, that's just, it just hit me, I'm like, wow, that's a lot of teachers from one school.
Experienced some turnover in VPK for sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And additions.
Okay. All right, if there aren't any more questions, we will move on. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, so we are now going to move ahead to now 19.01, School Board Attorney Process.
Yes, so this has, was brought up under Board Business, Board Member Requests, I'm sorry, Board Member Requests. And so for the staff, we just need to know if we need to stand up a process for you guys? Are we going to go out for RFQs? Are, I mean, you don't have to go through that process if you are satisfied with the attorney that you currently have. If you are satisfied with the attorney that you currently have, you are able to move forward with that attorney and then just negotiate a contract. But we just need direction on what you would like your process to be. Again, this came from Board Member Request.
I just, just for the board's knowledge, I do really like Mr. Delaney as our attorney. But as much as possible, I'd like us to stick with the Tuesdays and not be bouncing all over the place. It just becomes really difficult.
Yeah, you're right. I call me spoiled, because I guess that's what it's been for the last three years, two and a half at least, where we had representation, physical representation, all time. That's not the case anymore. And I'm not questioning the competency. I think competency is fine. I'm questioning availability. Sometimes you can get stretched and have a lot of other responsibilities. And I think that might be the case, which would put you at a very disadvantaged position, plus the fact of the hourly rate. You know, it's one thing if somebody's sitting here and traveling, it's another thing, I've never had virtual representation until this year. So, I mean, it's just things to consider for you, how you want to proceed. Not that, I mean, if you want to stick with what you got, fine. But you want also to have the best representation you can. So, and I agree. I think the Tuesday, Thursday, the Tuesday every other week works, especially when you've got people employed. I understand that.
Yeah, I'd say you bring up some good points. And thanks for bringing those forward. I, too, would say that I do feel very comfortable with the relationship that we have with Mr. Delaney and his firm. I think what, right now, everything's been kind of fluid, because they have still been kind of a temporary solution until we make it permanent. So one thing we can do to address some of the things that Ms. Masara brought up as far as the dates and you brought up, is that we part of the negotiation of longer-term contracts, saying, you know, what these dates are, the dates that we're going to be and how that's going to look. Because I do prefer having them here personally. For the workshops, it's not as, I think, as big a deal, but it is best. I think absolutely at our business meetings, there's just no exception. Any virtual really should be, just because it just can't be done, right? There's just some sort of, something came up and it can't be there. But we should try and make that part of our negotiation, that we have a physical attorney present. But that would be something that we can work out with our negotiations. Because I'd like to see now, if we bring them on as you're our firm, okay, let's look at the rates, that, what they're going to charge. This was kind of like on-demand kind of pricing that we have right now. And there might be some room to negotiate there for a longer-term contract. So I would say it would be in our best interest to start those negotiations. If everybody likes working with the firm, then we should start having that conversation. Because we don't need, for legal representation, we don't have to go out and do the request for proposals and everything like that. So.
Just something to note, I think that they just, there's like a new Florida statute that you can't, like, renew an attorney for longer than a year or something, when a new board's coming on. Like, I swear I saw that somewhere.
Well, yeah, we'll evaluate. If any state statute is going to take precedence, so that will be something that we have to look into.
And that's what I was going to add, is that you do have a board, some changes happening to the board. I don't know if the term is new, but, you know, you have some changes happening to the board. And during that time, you are going to be required to do your structuring and identify then as that new board, what days you're going to meet, when your meetings are going to happen. So I don't want you also to come in with the mindset that it will just remain what it is, because that's the power of the whole board coming together. So we can, you know, this isn't something that we have to address immediately. However, it has come up under this current board, and we did not want to just continue to delay the conversation.
So is it possible, then, to say, I mean, same for me. I mean, Attorney Delaney has made himself very available for just the handful of times I wanted to reach out to him. So is it possible, then, to continue those services until the new, the two new, and I really don't want to use new members, because I got so sick and tired of handling that for two years?
With two members?
With the two members joining in November, does it then make sense to have this be one of the December-January topics?
Well, what I was, if there were, definitely, what I would say, it might be a good idea to say, hey, is this kind of the, this the direction we would like to go? At least start the negotiation, even if that vote comes after swearing in of the new board members. We'll have actionable information for them to work with. And because the only thing right now that I see is a caveat, is the schedule of their physical. And he has expressed that and has actually asked if the board would be willing to not keep changing it, but maybe adopt a different day for the, and that they could commit to. And then we would, but then that would be in our reorganization. If we had all that information, the new board could vote on that at that time, and we can set our schedule for the year if that, if that's what we decide to do. If we feel that it's valuable to keep on the attorney to change the date of the meeting. But we can't, it has to be solid. We can't change it like every other month. That's just not, I mean, we're hiring them, they should be working around our schedule here if they can accommodate. But we have invested here, and it seems to be that we like working with them. So we should at least consider trying to figure out a way if this will work together long-term. So that's what I'd recommend.
I just also would like to mention, we've had one executive session since we've had this new attorney, bargaining, it was the bargaining. And up to that point, you never could have anybody virtual. And Trevor went crazy once, because it was during COVID, and the bargaining person had COVID. And that's the only way he could be represented. But you're not allowed to attend virtual meetings, you're not in an executive session. You're not even allowed to take notes, everything has to be left behind. So that might be something in negotiating fact you want to straighten out.
Yeah, I'd say in that, I would hope that, from their perspective, that they would not see that as an acceptable way to participate in a meeting like that. But thanks for.
But they did, and that concerned me.
That was during COVID?
No.
Oh.
No, our last executive session.
Oh, for bargaining?
We had three people virtual. You're not allowed to be virtual.
But not the attorney?
Yes, he was.
Oh, the attorney was virtual.
Yes. He was virtual, as well as the bargaining person, as well as Masara.
That's something to definitely consider, so.
Yeah, so just keep that in mind.
Thanks for bringing that forward.
But he should have known that. That concerned me.
Point taken. So then, I would say, let's start a conversation and negotiation with them, looking at potential longer-term contract, and then we'll work out some of these details within it.
So what would need to happen is that you ask the board, would have, the board would have to give you permission to go and have those, begin having those conversations directly with Mr. Delaney. We can definitely organize it, but they would have to identify somebody that's going to have those conversations, to make sure that he and his firm are still interested in continuing the work.
That's right. Make sure they can meet our demands, right? So, I mean, it seems like there is consensus that at least the willingness to work with them. So do you want to enter into negotiations into a longer-term contract?
Well, I just have a quick question. Since you're going to be on the board at least another two years, if they say they cannot be here in person on Tuesdays, and they can only provide this service, if we could change to Wednesdays, it sounds like that's kind of a big piece here, where it, you know, it's the puzzle pieces potentially not match up between different, you know.
Well, that would be, that would either, that could be a deal breaker. All I'm saying is that I don't know that for a fact. I know that we had to change a couple of meetings just recently because of that. Is that a long-term thing, a short-term thing? But it's something that all of us are going to have to, we're going to have to agree on. And if that is a deal breaker for a board member, then we'll have to have that discussion, right?
I think just also thinking about the fact that you're going to have to, you're going to have to have a conversation around reorganization and consider the incoming board members as well.
Yeah, and I think you also have to remember that the attorney is your parliamentarian. So it's important, you know, it's not just being the school board attorney, they are our parliamentarian by our rules.
Sure.
So, you know, and I think at this point, you would have to, as Chair, you would need to move into a negotiating position to see what's happening to bring it back for the rest of the board.
Well, they have assured, he's assured me that for all of our business meetings, that during this interim part, that we would have, that we would have physical presence, and it would only be in these workshops where that might be a caveat. But again, this has been to accommodate our needs in between. So that now we're going into a contract with services required by this board and needs required by this board, that they're going to have to be able to say, I can do that or I can't, you know? So.
I'll just add one last thing, and I'm done. From a rate perspective, I would assume that if there's no change in the rate, like, if it's like, we're going to charge you $800 for every minute we spend with you, whether it's contract or whether it's, you know what I mean, whether it's a à la carte as needed or it's a long-term, more long-term contract, obviously, we would take a look at that and say, like, I don't know why we would then enter into anything longer. We're not getting some kind of a better rate from it.
Right. I agree with you on that makes a good, you make a good point there. You know, one thing that we have now is a bit of a track record, and we have, we know the additional, outside of our, of our meetings, we have sort of an idea of what we're spending on other things outside of that interaction. So we'll have something to work with here, and they do, too, to see the time invested. We did have, if you recall, we had some people submit on the last round when we were looking through this, and they had different models of doing an hourly rate. Some had a flat rate, some just wanted to bill by hour, some had a structured one, they had a flat rate, and for this, it's more. So again, this is all the negotiation, and it's going to come back for us to approve and vote on at some point in the future, so.
So we're just saying, like, Chair Furry, please?
Start the conversation.
Check it out.
Right. Get the information, bring it back, and the board will have the ultimate say in the end. And I'm just going to be gathering and negotiating and trying to bring it forward. And sometimes in negotiations, we might have to go back to the table. It doesn't mean that just because we come back, that's it. We need feedback from the board, right? So it'll be workshops, so it'll definitely have, but it's important for them, too. If we want to work with them, if we don't start giving them clear direction that we want that, then they may need to move on, right? And so we want to make sure that we're balancing both interests, so. All right? So then I'll take that as, let's start it and move forward.
Yes, start it, start it, because it's going to take time.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to do that. So we're going to close out 19.01, and we move on to public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
One's signed up.
Okay. So we'll close public comment and move on to board member requests. And any board member request today? Okay. We have upcoming board discussion topics.
We're making a good job. We're getting through those topics.
It's getting smaller.
Getting through those topics.
Half-cent highlight. This was a great idea, having this to keep track. Thank you for adding that, Ms. Masara. And so we will move on to closing comments.
I don't have anything at this point, except the loss of a student, that does concern me.
I'm sorry?
The loss of a student, that we'll just, see how that goes. That's all I have.
Anything on closing?
I don't know what I can say or not, so I'm just going to.
I think right now, just, we are being sensitive to the family and their privacy and when we are given permission, and we will do that. But I will say that we're taking care of our students and taking care of faculty and staff that are connected.
I wish for everybody happiness and good health. Thank you.
Good point. No comments.
Yeah, I have the same condolences out there for the family. And I just want to thank staff for all their hard work today. And also, I just want to officially, you know, congratulate Ms. Lauren Ramirez and Ms. Reddy. I'm looking forward to working. Congratulations on winning your elected seats. Look forward to working.
I didn't know that that was you. Hello?
Hi.
Well, after the meeting. Hi, Lauren.
Okay.
I do have two items. One, the half-cent presentation will be just looking at where it is on the board. It'll be a November presentation. And then the Wellness Center was on for an update on the Wellness Center. We did pull that. As we are just still working with the company to identify plans and making changes, there was not anything substantial to bring an update for, but we will be bringing an update to you, so.
I have a comment about that, because I'm in that network. I have nurse practitioners asking about that job, so as we start to get more information, it'll be nice to share.
Yeah, especially on where individuals will be able to go in order to find the job if they wanted to apply for that, for that job, yeah.
The two physicians have not advertised yet, but I will bring the update, what the platform will advertise on in the criteria.
When somebody applies, does it go to you or to Marathon?
Good question.
This will be an advertisement by Marathon.
Okay, who should I send them to?
So I'll let you know the platforms that they're going to advertise on. What they have is, once they've created the shortlist, we get to sit down on the interview process and have a say-so as far as the selection of the personnel, once they've established, you know, that they meet the criteria.
Very exciting.
So we're still just working through the building and layouts, and we want to do this the right way and timely, but provide to our staff a great product. And so we're still working through what that's going to look like.
Between the courthouse and the Wellness Center, there's a lot of, like, potential HGTV Reno happening. We should get, like, a camera crew out here.
Yes. You're right. That's a good way to put it.
Wadler County Reservation.
And for, since we brought it up, for the record, the BOCC did take action today, and we have ourselves a courthouse.
That's exciting.
More to do.
Yes, more to do.
More to do.
Yes.
Well, thank you for that update.
Those are the two updates.
That's a good deal.
Thank you.
All good stuff. All right, this meeting is adjourned.